July 23rd meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, the republic which is one nation, indivisible, and just as for all.
The clerk can call a roll.
Commissioner Hostie?
I'm here.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Here.
Commissioner Mannix?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Mayor Calderon?
Here. Commissioners, the first item is approval of our July 9th council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Hostie, is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Mannix, discussion. The clerk can proceed.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Aye.
Commissioner Mannix?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
This is resolution...oh, I'm sorry, it's not a resolution. Cancelled it.
It is cancelled and duly noted. We're at public comment. Any signing sheets?
No.
Okay. We have no communications. We've got one department report from the police department. Any questions, comments, or concerns? There being none, we're going to move on to approval of bills by resolution and answer for to read that into the record, please.
Be it resolved by the council of the Village of Forest Park, Cook County, Illinois, that we dispense with the reading of the individual bills inasmuch as each department had has approved and signed bills in the following aggregate amount for their respective departments. Public Affairs Police, $21,618.43. Community Center, $5,141.69. Accounts and Finance Clerk's Office, $45,968.66. Accounts and Finance Fire Department, $41,514.71. Department of Health and Safety, $3,530 even. Street Department, $20,065.79. Public Property, $42,576.6. VIP, $444.9. TIF, $831.25. Online Payments, $7,009.66. Water Department, $414,171.77. For a total of $602,872.11.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the bills as read?
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Hostie, is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Mannix, discussion. The clerk can call a roll.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Aye.
Commissioner Mannix?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
This is Resolution R. 43-12.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business. We're going to move on to new business. The first item, Commissioners, is a proposed ordinance amending Title IX of the zoning code of the Village of Forest Park pertaining to conditions regarding personal grooming services.
Like the motion?
We've got a motion approved by Commissioner-
I'll second, Your Honor.
Second by Commissioner Hostie. We'll move on to discussion. Mayor? Commissioner Harris?
I would just like to state on the record that this ordinance is a bit far-reaching and a tad ill-conceived, a little bit knee-jerk, and I would urge my fellow members of the board to vote against it.
Any further discussion? The clerk may proceed.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Aye.
Commissioner Mannix?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
No.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
This is Ordinance O. 25-12.
Thank you. Item two is a resolution awarding a contract for the 500 block of Des Plaines Ferdinand Alley reconstruction.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
We have a motion approved by Commissioner Mannix. Is there a second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Second by Hostie, discussion. The clerk can proceed.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Aye.
Commissioner Mannix?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
This is Resolution R. 44-12.
Thank you. That motion is approved and so ordered. We're going to move on to the next item. It is a resolution authorizing the award of contract for the 2012 sidewalk program.
Your Honor.
Commissioner Hostie?
I'd like to make a motion to reject the bid.
Okay.
I'd like to see it rebid. It's way over the engineer's estimates.
Is there a second on the motion to reject?
Second, Your Honor.
And let's move on to discussion.
Your Honor.
Commissioner Hostie?
Just to follow up. The engineer's estimate on this is $35,000 change. We obviously negated King's Point because they're not qualified anymore, and then the only other bidder was $54,000. I think they're throwing out a big number, hoping they get something, and they did. I'd really like to see our engineering company go back, rebid it, and they do have enough time to get it done for this season.
Okay. Any further discussion? So on the motion to reject the bids, and I'm assuming as part of that same motion, also authorization to go back and re-publicly bid-
Yes, sir.
...the project. The clerk, if she is ready, may proceed.
I'm ready. Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Aye.
Commissioner Mannix?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number four. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of an inter-agency agreement with the Illinois State Police. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Okay. Moved by Mannix, second by Hostie, discussion. The clerk can proceed.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Aye.
Commissioner Mannix?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
This is Resolution R. 45-12.
And that was our 45-12.
Yes.
The motion is approved and ordered. We're going to move on to item five. It's a resolution approving a proposal for landscape maintenance with McAdam Landscaping. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Moved by Hostie, is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Mannix, discussion.
Mayor?
Commissioner Harris?
I would like it clearly stated where it's even acceptable for this to be on the agenda, where it falls under anybody but my supervision, under the Commissioner of Public Property. And you, as the Commissioner of Public Affairs, put this on the agenda. I'm pretty sure that taking care of public property is not part of public affairs. I believe you have no right to have this on the agenda, and it should be immediately removed from the agenda before there's even a vote.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just as a point of order, Village Code 1-4-3, under 143-1, paragraph B, powers and duties of Commissioner of Public Affairs, paragraph number nine, that the Commissioner of Public Affairs absolutely shall report to the council for its actions all matters requiring attention in any department, which includes yours. And so-
Are you going to run this like you're an autocrat? Are you going to have final rules? So you're going to just...we were elected, perhaps we should do our jobs.
Commissioner, the purpose of the existing Village Code, which was enacted long before I even sat in this position, is intended to take actions or inactions within a department such as yours, where you are going against the grain of the will of the entire council.
Entire?
Commissioner, when I'm finished speaking, I'm going to give you the floor. Until then, just remain right there. As you'll recall, over the course of two budget meetings, we discussed this whole issue of either hiring extra summer help and/or subcontracting the maintenance as what is proposed right here. And it was clear by the majority of the council, which ends up overruling an individual commissioner, including yourself. When this body makes the decision, if they make a decision to do this, that overrules you as an individual commissioner in your department.
You done? I'm making sure. In the duties from the code, section 1-4-3-5, the Commissioner of Public Property shall charge and of supervision of all care, custody, and recovery of all village property. So could you please tell me where your duties override that?
Commissioner, I believe that it's well-grounded in law, and certainly, any time after tonight, if you want to bring injunctive relief to an action taken by the village council, you may do so. Absolutely, the village council has the ability and authority to make decisions that overrule an individual commissioner. And so this is on the agenda tonight for consideration, and certainly you have every ability and every right to try and be persuasive to your fellow commissioners as to why maybe they don't want to vote for this, but that's up to you.
Your Honor.
Commissioner Hostie?
You said he has the rights to bring a jump to relief. Who would be paying for that?
Oh, I mean, I don't want to get that-
Well, I don't want to throw out there, go out there. I want to make it clear, he has no authorization to hire attorneys in the villages to fight something that's clearly stated in case law. And it's not an auto-
Can you cite the case law?
You know, we're...here, here, here.
Not right now, but I could probably find it pretty easy with Google.
We're not, we're not-
Every time I've checked to see in the commission form of government, when a commissioner has sued based on someone abusing what is their jurisdiction, they've always won. I have not seen any case where the commissioner has lost. So I'd love to see that. Why don't you Google that right away, Commissioner Hostie, and let me know.
I'll get right on it for you.
He agreed to it.
And what I was finishing before you interrupted me, sir, was it's not the mayor taking the power, it is the council voting in a democratic way. So if you get two other people to say, you know what, we don't want McAdam stay out of my department, you win. But the majority of the council gets to make decisions, not one commissioner, sir.
Let's be very clear, this has nothing to do with McAdam, who does fantastic work. I share the public works with Commissioner Mannix. He wanted to power wash the curbs. He didn't think of this early enough when we had nothing to do in February, when it could have easily been done. But now, he wants to do that on my back, and that's not going to happen. He's not going to push that to my department, where we have to outsource that. I suggest he outsource the power washing and blow up your budget there, Commissioner Mannix. And I'm sure he'll be ready with the long-winded, yet not very substantive response. Go ahead.
The question before the body is consideration of adoption of the resolution approving a proposal for landscape maintenance with McAdam Landscaping. Madam Clerk, are you prepared to call the roll? Commissioner Hoskins, last call.
In the village administrator's memo on this item, it mentioned that this proposal came about as some of McAdam's historical work for the village. He specifically mentioned the planter boxes along Roosevelt Road. The planter boxes on Roosevelt Road, I do not believe were mentioned in McAdam's proposal to the village that we're considering tonight. I'm wondering if the council would entertain amending that to include the Roosevelt Road
I can only speak for myself. I would be in support of that. I kind of thought that we had all of our planter boxes covered here, but if we don't, I think it's something that should absolutely be considered.
Well, we're considering...can someone check the proposal? Do we have a copy handy?
They're all available on your iPads. I was kind of looking for it as I was talking, but it's all rolled into one paragraph. I'm not certain...I'm in a little bit of a disadvantage here, because Tim's not here tonight, unless John knows already. Do we have any of the planter boxes included in this, or just the, you know, those planted areas near the bumpouts and the like?
I think it's the bumpouts. I think the proposal was pretty detailed in terms of specifying where each box was located. I know that we have a planter...well, I shouldn't say I know, but I think I've seen a couple on Roosevelt Road. I think we move them from time to time, but...
I think we have about five on Roosevelt Road. I don't think they're in there. I think it's just the bumpouts, the parking lot across from the village hall, the two big hills on Des Plaines Avenue. I don't know exactly where for work, but I think that's where we stopped.
So it sounds like we most likely don't have any of the standalone planter boxes, any of them, Roosevelt Road and Madison Street?
Correct.
Which is pretty much the only locations.
Correct.
You know, so certainly, I mean, we could, we could...I doubt, I would support adding it to this. I think what happened in here, it sounds like we only have the planting areas like where we have-
The permanent in-ground.
The permanent in-ground.
John, maybe you can answer this, because it seems to be different in Tim's memo, and maybe Tim overstated it. Is it the intent of your department to continue to maintain the boxes through the department and then have McAdam pick up the permanent plantings?
We would do all planting. Anything that we have to plant flowers, any of that on Madison, Roosevelt, we would take care of.
Public work?
Yes, it's the bumpouts.
So that'd be Roosevelt also, then?
Correct.
In the same manner?
Correct.
Yeah, we don't have any bumpouts on Roosevelt, just the boxes.
Just the boxes, the same with Madison?
Correct.
So what this is, is the permanent in-ground ones, like when they put in on Harbor, on the new construction like Elgin and Washington. So the in-ground, almost curb level, I guess would be the way to look at it.
Correct.
And we probably have to have an amendment come back in to do the boxes, which if your department can do them, I'm fine with that. I think Pat's done a great job over the years.
Yeah, but the-
Roosevelt's getting less service. If it's better to add the five on Roosevelt to this contract and then have your department to Madison, I'm open to either way, as long as it gets good attention.
Just kind of going, swinging back to the budget meetings, you know, it seemed like kind of discussion centered around not that Pat doesn't do a good job, but whether or not he could be more efficiently utilized in other areas rather than the plantings. And maybe it makes sense, and a lot of communities do this already. You know, they subcontract all the plantings for flowers and things like that. You know, the people that do this for a living, and I shouldn't, you know, it's not, you know, being disrespectful of Pat. I think you, I mean, can you use him better elsewhere?
Yeah. The problem is, every street we build with these bumpouts, it's having more work without adding more employees. We've always handled Roosevelt and Madison. It's just, that's freeing them up to do other things. The bumpouts and the hills on Des Plaines are two main issues.
And if I remember correctly, this was the trade-off in terms of, we had fundamentally agreed to hire three more additional summer help, and we knew what that price was going to cost us. But then we said, can we have this outsourced? Let's get a price. And it turned out that the price to outsource it is less than hiring the three additional summer help. That was my understanding. And so it seemed to make both efficient sense and economic sense. You know, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see the council at least approve this to get this started. Come back at the next meeting, I'll have Tim get ahold of McAdam and get us the additional price for doing all the standalone planter boxes on Roosevelt and Madison.
McAdam's note says specifically the in-ground ones. Tim's does say Madison and Roosevelt. There might be some miscommunication between the two. It might already be in there.
Maybe it is. And we certainly, we can, you know, we can get that defined.
This expand the scope of work in this.
Sure.
Mayor, would you object to a motion to amend this proposal to include the planter boxes?
Not at all.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion to amend, the main motion, and the amended motion is to include the planter boxes on Roosevelt and Madison Street. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All of the standalone brick planter boxes.
Are there some of them circled by CTA? I think there are.
How about if the amendment says that we identify all of the standalone brick planter boxes and that those become included as part of this agreement?
If there's like one by Goldies, there's two over by the CTA station across from Dunkin' Donuts.
I'll defer to John. Do you know, outside of Roosevelt and Madison, do we have any of the boxes elsewhere?
There's one uncircled in Harvard, which is being moved, so...
We're going to be taking that away? But I mean, if you, if we were to amend the motion to just simply say-
Cover all places.
-wherever we have the standalone brick planter boxes, that we include that in the agreement?
That would pretty much conclude what I was thinking, Mayor.
I'd second that, Your Honor.
Okay, so we have an amendment to the main motion by Hoskins and seconded by Hostie on the amendment, so we'll have discussion on the amendment. And as soon as the clerk is ready, what we're going to need to do is call for a roll call on the amendment first, and then we'll go back to the main motion.
I'm ready.
So please proceed.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Aye.
Commissioner Mannix?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
No.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
So the amendment carries, and then we're back to the main motion. The main motion is on the resolution approving the agreement with McAdam. Madam Clerk, you ready to call that roll call?
Ready.
Please proceed.
Mayor?
Commissioner Hoskins?
I just want to say quickly that I appreciate the council's support for this amendment. I think it's important that Roosevelt Road gets the same attention that other parts of Forest Park get. I spoke to Commissioner Harris about this item earlier, and I told him I would be voting no, okay? Because I believe that commissioners should have the right to control their budgets and to run their departments. So I want to make that clear, that while I do want to see all of Forest Park look beautiful, for policy reasons, I'll be voting no against the main motion.
Proceed, are you ready?
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoskins?
No.
Commissioner Mannix?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
No.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
So the ayes have it, three yeses and two noes.
This is Resolution R. 46-12.
Thank you. Item six is a resolution approving and adopting a grievance procedure for complaints alleging any action prohibited by section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. Commissioners, this is all tied to a requirement as part of the IC Grand that we are recipient of, and this was, I think, the last remaining item that we need to adopt by resolution in order to continue with that IC project.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Got a motion to approve by Hoskins, is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Mannix, discussion.
Mayor?
Commissioner Hoskins?
We have a couple of questions about this. The resolution is not very long. I think I understand, like most of us do, that this was a requirement, you know, a condition on the large IC grant that we got from the state to pass some of these resolutions. This sets up a grievance procedure for individuals to, who feel like they've been discriminated against because of disabilities, correct?
Correct.
What I'm wondering about, does this only apply to personnel-type issues, or could this apply to structural issues in the village? For instance, we support a number of external events, and we've supported some of those events for years and years. Now, let's say you have a resident who is in a wheelchair, and they find themselves at a point where there's no access, either to get into a structure, to fit into the stall of a restroom. Would we be exposed to any liability because of their inability to get into a restroom stall or to access a structure in the village? I'm just kind of wondering if this whole process is that broad, or is it more narrow?
Do you want to speak to it?
No, it's not that broad, and it actually relates the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, section 504, that prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability for any program or activity receiving federal assistance. So would that be, you know, nearly that broad? It would be specifically to the project that is being funded with federal funds at that point.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The clerk may proceed.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Aye.
Commissioner Mannix?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
This is Resolution R. 47-12.
Thank you. That motion is approved and so ordered. Item seven is a motion ratifying the mayor's signature on agreements regarding senior citizen activities.
Motion approved.
Got a motion approved by Hostie, is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Seconded by Mannix, discussion. The clerk may proceed.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Aye.
Commissioner Mannix?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
Tim's on vacation tonight, so we're going to move to commissioner reports, and, you know, before I kind of go around the dais, I just want to remind the commissioners that this item that's on the agenda, commissioner reports, is there for the opportunity for each of you to talk about matters specifically related to your department, not really open-mic night, you know, where you kind of just go wherever you feel like going. It's really to talk about matters germane to your department. So in the past, we haven't always adhered to that, but that is the point of the commissioner report. So Commissioner Hostie, you're up first.
I have nothing this time, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Commissioner Mannix?
Yes, Your Honor. Real quick update on the Circle Avenue project that's coming along. Obviously, I understand that, you know, traffic's a little snarled, sidewalks were tore up, but it is coming along, and the weather permitting, we'll be right on schedule with it. And the engineer assures me that they will have the first layer of the binder coat down here in the next week or so, which will make it a little bit smoother to actually drive on. And I just want to update everyone on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to check with you. I got the guys fixing a gutter over at the community center tomorrow. Is that all right with you, or no?
Is that your only report, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, I have, I have a matter that absolutely needs, I believe, your attention and/or consensus advice. And, you know, it has to do, it has to do a little bit with our former government. It has to do a little bit about the management of our former government. It has to do with, absolutely, by our Village Code, and actually, state statute, that the mayor is charged specifically, solely and specifically, with bringing matters to the attention of the village council on anything related to a specific department. And I do have some issues pertaining to the public property department that has reached a boiling point, particularly with our village administrator. And I think that there is also the likelihood that, you know, it's an impediment to John Doss, our sole department head down in Public Works, if you will. As of last Friday, Commissioner Harris has made a determination that, for most part, the village administrator is going to be cut out, and that the commissioner is going to be solely responsible for the public property affairs. And, you know, I've been kind of watching somewhat of a pattern develop, you know, and not only kind of, I'll call it commissioner of convenience, but some behavior that I think is unprofessional. And some of these things stem back several months, but I think that they're significant and serious enough that I do need to bring it to your attention. I do need to hear from you in terms of what actions we might consider or undertake to maybe chart a different direction or a new course of direction. Quite a number of months ago, early on, and I always give the benefit to newly-elected officials, because there is a learning curve, you know, that each of us has to go through when you are an elected official for the first time, but you know, the commissioner, he had a meeting set up with our mechanic at Public Works, and they had an appointment set up for a certain time, and the mechanic stayed at the Public Works building. The commissioner was way tardy, never a phone call to the mechanic to say, "Just hang in there. I know it's at the end of the day, but I'm running late," or whatever. You know, just didn't show up, simply didn't show up for quite some time after the scheduled time. And, you know, our mechanic, not knowing, you know, if the commissioner was ever going to show up, did what I think most responsible people would do, and left, thinking that nobody was going to show up. And at that time, you know, the commissioner wanted to impose discipline on the mechanic for insubordination. Now what happened was the commissioner waited too long to bring that to the attention of the village administrator, and under the 701 bargaining agreement, there are timelines in that agreement in which you need to observe to bring discipline against a member of the bargaining unit. So I'm, you know, that was kind of the beginning of a number of instances, you know, that have occurred. Most recently, Friday, apparently Karen Deluski has had some issues at the community center, and obviously, she contacted John Doss, who I think is the appropriate person to contact, but I think brought the commissioner into the loop. And so the commissioner made an appointment to meet John Doss there, and in similar fashion, almost 45 minutes went by where John Doss was at the community center waiting for the commissioner with no phone call to say, "Look, and I'm going to be late." Got tied up, whatever. The commissioner eventually showed up, but then soon thereafter sent correspondence to our village administrator saying, "You know what? The last eight, nine months have been fine, but from here on out, I'm going to take over. I'm going to take over all aspects of public property." This is concerning to me. I think that it undermines the position of village administrator that we created way back when. Certainly, I mean, I clearly understand the statute and our village codes as it pertains to the roles and responsibilities of elected officials. But at some point, you know, we as a governing body made the decision to have a village administrator to really take care of these day-to-day operations. And so what concerns me is if we have one commissioner that says, "You know what? I don't want anything to do with the village administrator." And then we have maybe one other commissioner, or two other commissioners, or three other commissioners that say, "Well, no, I still like what the village administrator does, so I'll just let him continue doing that." I'm conflicted in really understanding how that scenario helps the efficient operations of the local government here. And it's concerning to me, to the extent, that that, in fact, is the reason that the law makes provisions to bring matters to the entire village council for a decision that may overrule individual commissioners. So let's think about it this way. If the law is intended to give sole and exclusive authority to one commissioner, Commissioner Hostie, you could wake up next week and say, "You know what? Chief Glinky, take a hike and get rid of all the fire trucks. We're not setting fire trucks anymore, and that's my decision as commissioner."
That'd be a problem.
That would be a problem. Commissioner Hoskins, you could get rid of all your folks in the bowling department and say, "I don't feel like inspecting properties anymore." And you could say, "I have the right to do that." I mean, of course, these are overly stated, but certainly, it's no different. Commissioner Mannix could say, "I'm getting rid of all the, I'm getting rid of any trucks that are under my control at Public Works, because I just don't want any of those trucks anymore." And John Doss, send the guys home packing. And of course, those are absurd examples. Those examples, I think, speak to the point of any one of us saying, "You know, I read a couple of lines in the law, and I think that I'm the be-all and end-all when it comes to operating my department." I think at the point in time when we hired a village administrator, we said, "We want that person to be responsible for the day-to-day operations. We want that person to work with our department heads on a daily basis." I mean, whether it's Tim Gillen or Joe Schmo sitting in the position of village administrator, just think, think how that person can operate efficiently when, in this case, within our Public Works Department, we have two elected officials. One department head, two elected officials. One elected official says, "You know what, department head? Work your daily issues through the village administrator." The other elected official says, "You know what, department head? Forget the administrator, you talk to me." I mean, does that make sense? This just creates a whole bunch of conflicts and inefficiencies. We need to come to grips. Somehow or another, we need to come to grips on how this place is going to operate, because this is not the right way to operate the local government here. And we spent an enormous amount of time and years trying to get this to run efficiently. But what has happened, what I've observed over, you know, the last eight, nine years, you know, I personally believe that in many cases, we've kind of had a knee-jerk reaction because, you know, the local newspaper, more often than not, ends to side with the minority without really doing any full, thorough fact-finding or investigation, and then, I mean, as I think many of us know, you know, we read about it in newspapers, so we're a little hesitant about really stepping up, really stepping up and taking a position on what is right. If this body wants each of the commissioners to be absolutely responsible for your individual departments, then there's no need for a village administrator.
Thank you.
From what I can see, it would make no sense. If you want to run your department, then you run your department, and let's forget the administrator. But in the absence of that, we need to come to grips and figure out how things are going to run here, because it's not working. I have a very lengthy memo from the village administrator to me. It's written to me. You know, he's got problems with it, and I I see the problems developing. I see the tendency, in this particular case, our commissioner of public property is really saying to us, "You know what? If I feel like," and in fact, we even heard it at one of the budget meetings, "If I feel like I don't want to do snow plowing, we're not going to do snow plowing, and damn it, I get to make that decision because I'm commissioner of public property." You know, that doesn't work. That doesn't work here. It doesn't work in any government. That's why we have a larger body, so that when issues like this arise, the larger body steps in and says, "Time out. This is not how it's going to be." To that extent, to that extent, the statute is very specific. The statute is absolutely very specific that the council, meaning this body, the council shall determine, in essence, the responsibilities of each commissioner. You know, at the very first meeting after election, the statute dictates how the process in which, how you determine who's going to be responsible for each department. But then the statute goes on to say, "The council, this big body, decides the responsibilities of each of you in your various departments." And if necessary, I'm suggesting that whether we do it tonight or have a special meeting, we may need to revisit the powers and duties of either all of the departments, or one of the department, or some very, you know, variation of all of the above. We are heading for unnecessary problems. And I need your help in finding a solution. Commissioner Hostie?
I'm just putting together proposals for a possible change, bringing back people.
Is this a report, or is this a dialogue? Are you inviting us all to dialogue right now? Or were you making a report as the mayor? I mean, we, Commissioner Hostie's report, you know, he has an opportunity for a report. I had my opportunity for a report, and we skipped our opportunity. Is this a dialogue, or is this a commissioner report, Mayor?
Commissioner, this is both. Let me just go back one more time. This is only specific to the mayor. If it was commissioner, I absolutely give all the commissioners a chance. This is specific and solely to the mayor.
So this is, so it's not a dialogue?
No, this is a dialogue. That, you know, I have a duty to report to the council for its action, meaning for the council to take action.
Could you do this through a memo? I mean, could you give us a copy of the administrator's memo detailing his concerns about his work in relationship with commissioner of public property? And allow us to read that, what appears to be a three-page, single-spaced memo that we haven't had a chance to read, so that maybe we could respond to you in an intelligent manner? Not in the knee-jerk manner, you know, for the cameras, for the paper, rather than take everyone's time on this, because we're not going to take any action tonight. I'm pretty certain on that. You know, I appreciate that you let us make our reports. But it's not the first time that a commissioner's had a disagreement with the village administrator. I think that we could turn to our legal counsel, and maybe they could give us an interpretation of the statute in terms of who has the final authority, because it seems like there's some ambiguity there. Commissioner Harris is a duly-elected official here. If he makes decisions that are unpopular, or unpopular, excuse me, you know, he's going to have to face the music, so to speak. But I don't think it's up to us to decide how he manages his department. Our village administrator's a professional. He's been an elected official. He's been a business owner. I think he knows how to manage relationships. I think you could leave it to him to work with the department heads, with the individual commissioners, because it sounds like we're heading towards some kind of, you know, I hate to say power grab, but when I hear you talking about reassigning duties, you know, we have a lot of ambiguities in our system, and it's certainly not perfect. But I think all levels of government in our democracy, be they federal, state, county, they have divisions of authority, and they have checks and balances. And I don't see any difference in Forest Park. Commissioner Harris came up with some legitimate proposals during budget time, and they were shot down. And some people who had problems with his proposals specifically raised political issues. "Well, Commissioner, you want to cut your budget?" "Yes, so you can save this when you get ready to run for reelection." I don't think that was why he was making certain cuts. I think he wanted to save the village money. And he was thwarted from doing that. So while we appreciate you bringing this to our attention, you know, there are alternative ways to bring it to our attention. We should have the opportunity to read the memo, just like you had the opportunity there. And that's what I'll say on this tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your input on the matter.
Your Honor.
Commissioner Hostie?
Taking dovetail off the checks and balances, which is why I believe you brought this to us.
That is correct.
The impasse is somebody telling the village administrator he no longer wants to work with them, and he's not allowed to talk to a department head about anything to do in town. Where he said in a budget meeting that we do too good of a job, snow plowing, we should cut that out. There becomes a time when it's not up to wait three more years for election. It's to take care of the village in the best proper way, to make sure we're doing the best plowing of snow, the best public works. So I'm not of the opinion that we wait three years and let the people decide. The people elected us as a body to override somebody when they make mistakes. I think that check and balance you brought before us is a good thing this evening. I would look forward to a memo of suggestion of a path you're looking for correcting this. Impasse, I'd like to see the memo also, but obviously, I don't think we can do something this evening. But I would like to move towards a resolution so we don't have a day-to-day bumping of heads between an elected official, our executive that's the full-time here, and a department head. I think we're just building walls that don't need to be there.
The purpose, Commissioners, of bringing this to your attention first is, you know, to get some feedback generally. You know, not specifically, you know, the feedback here tonight could be, the majority of y'all might end up saying, "You know what? Leave everything as is. Each commissioner has absolute sole emperor-like authority over their department, and so just forget it." And then if the majority felt that way, then I'd say, "Okay, at least I know how we're going to operate." And I would tell our administrator, "Suck it up, and forget about it."
Do I get to speak with all these lies and massive exaggerations cast upon me?
Please, Commissioner Harris.
Because you know that you've absolutely exaggerated most of it, and quite frankly lied.
Which part is that, Commissioner?
Which part?
Yeah, which part is that?
I've worked, first of all, I've never said that I am not going to work with the village administrator anymore. I said, "We are changing the relationship," because the constant attempt to usurp my power by you in correlation with your childhood buddy, there's been no real attempt to work with me. So when that happens over and over, I have a great relationship with John Doss. We work very well together. I trust him implicitly. But there's been a middleman that seems to be causing some confusion amidst the process. I thought better to have a direct contact with John instead of not hearing back from the administrator for weeks on emails that I send and not getting answers, having questions just die out there. So I thought perhaps, and let me quote the village administrator on the day after I was elected and I met him, when I asked, "What exactly do I get to do?" I want to hear it in his words. He said, "You have complete control of public property, and you can have as much control as you want." Some commissioners in the past have done nothing, some have wanted to do a lot more. That's from the mouth of the village administrator. And pardon me that I got elected and I want to do a job. You can keep trying to take it away. You can keep just sitting here and having the status quo be run over and over, and not try and do new things, which I'm trying. And that's fine. So beat me down, try and beat me down again. But I would rather have the people speak than someone who hasn't let me do my job since the word "go" with all the closed-session meetings that you had last summer to try and reprimand myself, Commissioner Hoskins, when he's trying to run his department. Sorry that we don't agree on everything, and you don't like that. That's where this is from, and don't anyone be fooled that it isn't. That's exactly what this is about.
In your memo, I think, from last week, Commissioner, you said that you feel decisions are being made that are not in the best interest of the department and are being made by people that, quite frankly, have no business making those decisions. Were you talking about our administrator and John Doss?
I was talking about our administrator when he wasn't even approaching me on certain subjects. And I told him from the get-go that I wanted to be involved.
And you also said that you plan on running the department daily from here And you also said that you plan on running the department daily from here on out.
Are you leaving anything out of that? Because you are.
In tandem with John.
In tandem with John.
We simply will only need you for the admin-level issues.
Exactly. So is he completely aced out, or is he going to be kept in the fold on everything that's going on?
I, that's hard to say.
Well, when you're, you don't hear on issues, when you don't get answers on issues, maybe someone's reaction is to change that relationship a little bit. And as he stated when I took office, "You can do as much as, or as little as you want within your department." That's Tim Gillings' words.
I think that our administrator feels, based upon both emails and conversations between the two of you, that in essence, as of last week, you've pretty much isolated his day-to-day responsibility, specifically with your department.
Is that what the memo says? Or is that your interpretation of the administrator's memo?
No, Commissioner, that's the administrator's verbal communication to me.
Well, why don't we wait until the administrator's here, so he can say it? Because right now, we pay him, he gets paid to speak for himself.
Commissioner, I understand that. I understand that.
I don't know what we're going to accomplish now. You're bringing this to our attention, and that's great. I think we would like to read the documents. I mean, you're sitting there with a pile of documents in front of you. We're sitting here with iPads in front of us.
Commissioner, at some point, you may have the opportunity to see all the documents or not. I'm not certain yet.
Why couldn't you give us the documents before you?
That's why I'm listening, you know, I'm going to listen. I've stated my opinion.
Procedurally, wouldn't it have made more sense to give us the documents, so that we could also review them?
Yeah, but that all sounds good for the people in the administration.
Oh, it sounds good for the people right here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, it does.
You know, I may come back with that.
Why not do it in the first place?
I've gotten at least some sound reasoning from Commissioner Hostie.
Why not do it in the first place, Mayor?
And I haven't heard from Commissioner Mannix yet.
Why not do it the first place, Mayor?
You know what, Commissioner? Because I didn't. That's why. End of story. Because I didn't.
So you want to have emperor-like power to bring things to our attention?
Commissioner, if I had emperor-like power, I wouldn't be discussing, the emperor wouldn't be discussing it with a volume here. I would have just been taking action. Come on, cut out the nonsense craziness. We, you know, there absolutely is a number of issues going on stemming back from just shortly after the commissioner was elected.
The commissioner seems like he wants to do his job.
Okay. What world are you talking about?
It means when-
Be a little more specific. Don't double-talk.
It means when the commissioner puts forward a proposal on ways that he expects to save money, and cut down on some non-core spending, and it's rejected because someone says-
Is this like snow plowing?
Someone says to him, "Oh, sure, you just want to look good because you cut your budget. No, we're not here to let you do that." You know, that's when politics gets in the way of-
So Commissioner, is it only politics when somebody else brings it up, not you? Because I'm the one who made the statement to him in that meeting, and it wasn't attended by everybody here, and it wasn't broadcast, so I'll say what I said that night. You are intentionally undercutting your budget, cutting core services, including snow plowing, to make it look better than it's everybody else who's making the mistakes around here when we blow your budget, but by actually buying salt, having overtime for plowing snow, and things like that.
Yeah, I think the Commissioner Harris wants to see the streets plowed adequately in Forest Park. I think that what he meant is that if it's 3:00 in the morning, you know, we don't necessarily need to have a whole contingent of snow ploughs going around plowing streets at 3:00 in the morning. Maybe they can wait till 6:00 AM. No, they could probably wait till 6:00.
Those other cars will wait.
I hear staff making comments who don't have a place in this debate, and that's perfectly fine. But, you know, the commissioners' disagreements with the administrator that carry over to this body that everyone's hearing about tonight, I think some of them have political origins. And quite frankly, if he says that he doesn't have 100% confidence in whether the administrator will bring him all the information, I applaud him for being involved in his department. That's what he's there for.
Do you share the same views, Commissioner?
You know, it's really not about what specific views we share.
Can you answer the question?
No, you didn't answer the question, you didn't answer the question about why you didn't give us the documents before you blindsided the commissioner with a whole stack of papers and a three-page memo that only you've read. You're here speaking for the administrator.
Commissioner, that's a memo written to me. It's not written to the village council.
Well, you can share it with us, because you're bringing it to, it's not written to the-
Right now, that's privileged information. That's a memo written, what's written to me?
Does it say confidential on it?
That's written to me. That's privileged.
Does it say? Well, then you can share it. You're bringing things to our attention.
So, so, you know, maybe somebody can help explain this to me, because I have the powers and duties, Commissioner, of public property. The Commissioner of Public Property shall have charge of and supervision over the care, custody, and recovery of all village property not otherwise specifically assigned.
Do you want to transfer those duties to the mayor? Do you want to transfer those duties to, oh, so the emperor comes out?
You know, they're, that's right, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Turn off your mic over there, I'll turn it off for you.
Go ahead and turn off, Emperor.
You always like to showboat in front of people in the audience. The Commissioner of Public Property shall have charge of the repair and maintenance of the village hall, and all village buildings, and of the grounds connected therewith, all abrupt ground utilities, and the direction of the lighting of streets, alleys, public grounds, public places, municipal buildings, and all other public lighting provided for by ordinance. The Commissioner of Public Property shall also have authority over and be in charge of the construction, repair, and maintenance of all playgrounds. All persons employed by and assigned to the Department of Public Property shall be under the supervision and direction of the Commissioner thereof. Nowhere in here, I've not seen anything about snow plowing. I've not seen anything about anything to do with streets, Commissioner. So your lame reasoning that you're trying to develop in your mind about giving him a chance for saving overtime, that friggin' overtime probably should not have even been, I'm guessing that it's in his budget, should not even be in there. It's not his responsibility! And you want to talk about political showboating?
Should we transfer all those powers to the mayor? With that?
Commissioner, it's not in here. Come on, and you're going to law school?
Actually, I graduated from law school there.
Could have fooled me. Here's the duties, right here. What do you do? What line, what line do you read in between that says, "This guy's in charge of snow plowing," other than making it up right now? Come on, it's ridiculous. The point is, and you've been escaping it too, we have to decide how we want to operate here. And if you're looking perplexed, you know, we hired an employee in our building department down here. The staff went through a proper and professional interviewing process. And when it was all completed, after we had staff go through the interviewing process, and they had made a recommendation for a person to hire, the commissioner over on this side swoops in and says, "Thanks for all your work, but I'm going to handle it from here," and solely made a decision, I'm not, in fact, I don't even know if the person, in fact, I don't even think the person that was hired was part of the interviewees. Was she, Madam Clerk? She may have been in the original interviewees, but not a recommendation for hire. You know, in, I mean, in the past, I say, "I've not, I've not seen this happening in the past." You know, we've been leaving it in the hands of our staff. When, you know, when it comes time to hire people, they do the advertisements, they do the interviews, they make the recommendation, but the commissioner over here, Commissioner Hoskins, he escaped all that. Some newspaper didn't pick up on it at the time. You know, maybe the newspaper feels that's the right way to do it. I don't know.
Do you want to manage the newspaper too?
Maybe, maybe, you know, maybe-
Bring the newspaper report into our attention? Is that also what you do?
Maybe, maybe former Commissioner Telayian, maybe, maybe he thinks that's the right idea too. You know, we're, we're kind of, we're, we're changing the way that our staff is conducting business, and all I'm asking is if that's how you want it done, that's fine, but, but I think that we need to talk about it and agree on. We'll tell, we'll tell Vanessa, who also, you know, double, double serves as, you know, part of our human resources, and our department heads, depending upon which department we're looking for somebody to hire, you know what? Thanks, but we don't need you anymore. We have an opening. If it's in the building department, Commissioner Hoskins, you make the choice. If it's in the clerk's office, Commissioner Hostie, or in the fire department, although with the firefighters, you don't have me say so there. Commissioner Mannix, on your side of Public Works, tell John, "Forget it." Tell Tim and Vanessa, "Forget it. We need to hire somebody. You'll make the call. We don't need anybody else." Is that what you guys want?
Your Honor, the employee was hired in Public Health and Safety. That person worked out, though, didn't they?
No.
Oh, they didn't? When were they let go?
I don't know exactly.
I heard a rumor, and it might just be a rumor, and I know politics never come into it, but I was told that that person was told they needed to go before this last primary election season, and the commissioner wanted to keep them on until after the primary season. I don't know if there'd be any reflection of him running for another office, but I am surprised for the first time in a year and a half, he's actually speaking in a council meeting on camera, on the record, because I haven't heard that in about a year and a half.
The person the commissioner hired was indebted to the village. I think is still indebted to the village. This has become absurd.
Mayor, I read two commissioner reports in The Post where the Commissioner of Accounts and Finance and the Commissioner of Streets was looking for improvements when it came to the street lighting. That's not part of their duties. Can you reprimand them for discussing that?
Commissioner, I'm probably going to need a little more detail than that.
You don't read The Post? Nice publication.
I, I haven't read whatever article you're referring to. I haven't read it yet. It doesn't mean that I won't read it. We need to determine, you know, how we want to operate, and how we want our staff to operate, because, you know, right now, it is a mishmash at best. And, and, you know, there are mechanisms that can be put in place, you know, to decide, as I already stated, that, you know, the statute gives specific authority to the council, the big body, the authority to determine the powers and the duties of each one of us as commissioners, the powers and duties to perform in our respective departments. You know, we, we have, we have, there continues to be an ongoing issue back and forth like playing ping pong on this fixed-price gas with the Commissioner of Public Property. I don't even know how the hell that's, discussions even happening in your department. I don't know that gasoline-
It's in my budget.
Again, we have to, we have to make some determinations on bringing clarity to, I mean, we have codes that say what the powers and duties are, but then what's happened is-
The mayor usurps the power.
After, what's happened is, you know, through efficient mechanisms of charting expenses, you know, we've divided those expenses and put those in various departments, but then what happens is sometimes the commissioners say, "Well, since that item is in my budget, I have exclusive authority over it." And so we've gone back and forth, the commissioner's gone back and forth with the administrator. The administrator has, you know, done his whole work, and, you know, determination, at least on his part, has been made that this whole notion of fixed-rate pricing for gasoline, you know, is just not realistic to, really, we're a low-volume gasoline purchaser, and it's just not going to work, but when the administrator, if the administrator communicates to any elected official, you know, it seems like only in this case, that in this case, if the elected official doesn't like the answer, you know, he continues to badger the administrator. And I think that's wrong. I think that's wrong.
We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on gasoline trying to find a cheaper way to purchase it. Should be a good thing, but thank you for now.
You know what, Commissioner? The best suggestion in the world I can do for you, right here in the astute company of those that have joined us tonight and the camera, you know what? If you don't believe it, why don't you go out and get a written proposal then? Anything keeping you from doing that?
Yeah, I asked to go to the meeting with Mike Moore, and he went without me. I think you talked to him on the phone.
You know, there's got to be, there's got to be fifty other gasoline companies out there. If you think that it's that easy, if you think that it's that easy, why don't you just go out there and do it then? Why don't you, if you think that it's so easy because we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on gasoline, you have no conception whatsoever on, it's not the dollar amount, it's a total amount of gallons that are used, on whether or not, you know, gasoline's a commodity, and if you want to get fixed-rate pricing, you need to have some volume in there. The gallons, the thousands of gallons of gasoline, because whoever's going to give you a price, I mean, they're going to price on the air of guessing what the market's going to do over the course of time, and they're still going to want to make a buck. But if you are so damn sure that that's the way to go because we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on gasoline, why don't you just go get prices yourself? If you're going to run the department day-to-day, hell, you got time. You can even go down there, we got an office with phones and a table. Go down there, call people up, get a price. Why don't you do that?
I was working on something with Commissioner Mannix, because I believe we could work together, not just isolate people, about grouping together with other communities, municipalities, park districts, et cetera, so we had the volume to purchase at a cheaper price. And I must actually commend Commissioner Mannix for some great conversation on the subject.
Commissioner, you continue to, I'll call it badger, our village administrator, on whether or not there continue to be discussions with Fenwick.
That's badgering? I ask him once a week to tell me if there's been any discussion with Fenwick.
Commissioner, you do know that, well, of course you know. I mean, I'm the one charged with negotiating-
I know, I remember when you usurped that power when Commissioner Telayian was in the seat.
Still, you still, I don't think you understand the concept of the democracy with the bigger body. This isn't about usurping any power.
But if you get two people to agree with you, and you take away the powers of the other duly-elected officials, that's usurping power.
Commissioner, that's what democracy is.
I don't think you understand.
What part did you know democracy means?
I was elected to do a job. That was part of democracy.
Democracy means that, you know, the, I mean, I'm surprised that you even say that. You know, democracy says that when matters are brought before a larger body, democracy is about giving the minority a chance to be heard, but the majority rules, like it or leave it. The minority has always been heard in Forest Park, and even your predecessor that sat in that same chair, also a vocal person, and the minority got every opportunity to be heard, but the majority rules, and that's what a democracy is about. Nothing more, nothing less.
It's not about usurping power.
When this body makes decisions, those decisions in the majority equate to direction. And, you know, I, I don't know of any other way to explain it to you.
Did you just mention earlier that you were talking about restructuring how things are worded about the powers that certain commissioners may have, because it sounds like you don't like the job I'm doing?
That's why it's vested in the hands. It doesn't say the mayor gets to do it.
The mayor and his two yes-men. That's what it means. When's the last time you voted against him? The farm? Is it the first time in, what, twelve years?
Well, that may be because they're more rational thinking than you are. You know, you guys and this whole notion, you know, we got Marty laughing, Jerry Webster laughing, you know, this whole notion of, you know, and I, I read it. I hear three beats two. Well, yeah, four beats one. I mean, simple mathematics. Um, this whole notion of henchmen and this kind of stuff, that's nonsense. You, some of you folks like dreaming too much. You're not taking hallucinogenics or anything, are you?
Your Honor...
It's crazy.
Would you say probably ninety percent of the votes are five oh?
I mean, it could be.
Yeah.
But whenever, whenever the minority's on the losing side, they go, "Oh, there's the mayor's..."
Oh, the yes-man.
"There's the mayor's got the yes-man." Really? Really? Just because you lost? Just because, did you ever stop to think? Your, your idea may be half-brained. You ever think, stop and think about that?
Uh, no.
No, no, no. You think just because, you, you think just because you say it's your idea that we all should agree? Well, if the majority doesn't agree, that's because we, we don't believe in your idea.
You know, you control the agenda. I don't get things put on an agenda. You control the agenda. You won't, you, you don't have to, I, I don't get my say, that then it gets voted down. So if it's on the agenda, I'm usually speaking in dissent.
How would you, how would you like it done? Should I stop and pick up trays at Wendy's on the way in too? I mean...
I don't even know what that means, but...
Yeah. I'm not surprised. You know, I, I, I gave you...
If you want to give me the power to make the agenda, I would approve that. Yes.
Oh, I'm certain of that. But unfortunately, you, you, you don't. You know, you're not the mayor. Run for mayor. That, that, and if you win, then you, then, then you get all that pleasure. That, that's all it takes. That, that's all it takes, Commissioner.
Sure.
This isn't a case here, this isn't a case here, we're just trying to do my job. I ran for public office. You're right. You ran for public office in a, in a commission form of government. And you, sir, I don't believe took the time to understand not only what the commission form of government is, because you're out there saying, "Well, I'm gonna take care of my department." But then again, I got elected by the people, so I'm gonna take care of other departments too. Because I'm an elected official. I'm just trying to do my job.
So you don't think anyone should have suggestions that might better the village as a whole? That we should remain silent and not talk about our departments?
I don't know. I haven't heard a suggestion from you. I've heard about town hall meetings from you.
Public discussion, that's a bad thing, right?
Haven't, haven't, you know, I've heard about town hall meetings from you, but I haven't, I haven't heard any suggestions.
Then you're not listening, obviously. But I, I doubt you were in the first place.
I think that the state statute was designed by whoever crafted that, however long ago, to say that the council, the big body, is vested, trusted with the right to determine the powers and duties. In fact, I was trying to find it quickly, but it says something to the effect that when it's in the best interest of the village. And I believe that whoever and whatever brains crafted that language did so to make certain that individuals such as yourself that may go off half-cocked aren't allowed to continue doing that without being, maybe in some cases, having the duties realigned. I'm confident of it. Commissioner Hostie, I know you had a rational idea about, you know, coming up with some specific recommendations, and certainly, uh, I'm gonna work on that. Um, any other thoughts up here?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mannix.
I think that we have to be very cautious moving forward with this topic. Obviously, it's a spirited discussion up here. Uh, one area that I believe, you know, having read the ordinances myself, that I, I think that we could use some clarification is absolutely how us as commissioners interact with the, the village administrator, just so that there is a clear policy, perhaps would be the appropriate word, moving forward with something like that. I know that we've been proactive with adopting other policies regarding village employees, elected officials, staff, et cetera. And that would be something that I think that, you know, probably it's, it's time has come for us to have a discussion on that, you know, obviously as the council.
Good point. I want to go back to kind of, I define it as loosey-goosey. There's probably some other words that could be used. You know, when you look at, um, when you look at the position of village administrator, and, and this, this is the touchy part. And it, it has been touchy for quite some time. Um, you know, the, the, and it's written, it's in village code, that the administrator is responsible to the combined village council. It was not written in the beginning that the administrator is responsible individually to each commissioner. Because I gotta tell you, having witnessed now our fourth village administrator, it's a, it's a pretty hard task to have five bosses, in essence. And so, I mean, that's, that's what our code says. Combined village council. And, and, you know, I believe that in the beginning, when this was crafted, this was really intended to say, you know, let the administrator do his job. And, you know, if we as a village council think there are matters that really would be policy-related, that, you know, we debate those here, and then that creates the direction for the administrator to carry out, uh, in between council meetings. But that's not how things have been working. Um, you know, the way that things work is, you know, the administrator hears, not necessarily from all the elected officials. Some are, uh, more interactive and engaging than others. Um, some interact at the eleventh hour. Uh, there's, there's, it's not normal that, you know, we have elected officials that are kind of in here on a daily basis, or even two times a week or three times a week. Um, some show up just for our two meetings, you know, per month. And that's about the extent of it. And maybe there's some communication back and forth by email, and then in some cases, none. So, I mean, it's, it's all over the board. Um, you know, in, in, in other, in other communities, um, I mean, you know, the, the, the elected officials just, they, they don't kind of go and, and cross into whatever department they feel like crossing into. Uh, they're, they're more or less just, uh, engaging for legislative matters. So we, we have a hodgepodge going on here. And, you know, I think that it, it absolutely is reaching the boiling point where, where we need to create some clarity. Um, we have to look to the law first. I mean, the law is the place that really is going to spell it out. And, and then how do we bring some semblance to what the law says? And I, I think I initially would agree that we have to be careful about change in responsibilities. But I also believe that that's why the law is written the way that it is. Because if you need to make some adjustments to either maintain or improve efficiencies within the community, that's what this body is here for. You know, when it comes to hiring employees, for instance, I don't think that we should charge, you know, generally, and we've done it for a long time. You know, we've, we've, you know, we've left that responsibility in the hands of our staff to go through all the proper procedures. I mean, a lot of the staff has been going to, you know, they go to seminars, they, you know, they, they learn the ups and downs about hiring. And that's why we have our, in this case, our clerk that also serves, uh, also as human resources. We go through all these steps, only to get to the eleventh hour, got a commissioner swoops in, you know, hire somebody. Uh, it's kind of a slap in the face. Slap in the face to some of our, uh, staff that went through all the work of doing these interviews. And then to top it off, you know, we hire somebody that's indebted to the, to the village. Should have never done that.
Mr. Mayor?
Those, that's a no-no.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Have you ever, ever overruled staff on, on any topic?
Do, do, do you have an instance, Commissioner?
No, I'm just asking as, as a matter of course. You've, you've been a governor for a long time. You've been the mayor for a number of years. Have you ever overruled staff?
When it comes to hiring, Commissioner, no.
No.
No. And I don't believe that you should have either.
Have you overruled staff on other things? I mean, do you ever interpret, uh, maybe a policy or interpret a set of guidelines differently than staff?
You know, usually, Commissioner, the staff will come and, and talk to me. And, and actually, it's more of advice than overruling staff.
So it's elected officials' place to sometimes provide advice, whether you call it overruling or advice? I mean, an elected official does get to have, have their say.
Commissioner, you can try and rationalize this all that you want, which is fine. You know, we, uh, as I believe everyone sitting up here is aware of, we had, a number of years ago imposed the IMRF hiring freeze. I know in the hire that you made, I think that was just for a part-time position, so we didn't have to go through that. But, uh, we had an elected official that, and it's, it's ironic, because the elected official at the time was a Commissioner of Public Property, and it was, uh, former Commissioner Telaylian's, I gotta think about this now. Was it his predecessor? Anyways, then sitting Commissioner Steinbach just, just went ahead and, and hired somebody in the Public Works Department. Just because she felt like it. You know, some, some of these things have escaped the necessary scrutiny, but, you know, I, I always get the short end of the stick, uh, until today. Um, and it was soon thereafter that we imposed, uh, I came up with this idea of adopting an ordinance which would force the hiring of full-time employees other than police and fire to have to come back before the village council, the bigger body. Because at the time, that commissioner shouldn't have single-handedly hired somebody in Public Works. That, 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 that should not have happened. Because if, if I'm trying to think back, I think we were, I think we were going to, uh, we had, we, somebody had left, and we were gonna vacate that position and not fill it. Um, but the system was undermined it, but we found a solution to it. Now, with the part-time people, we don't have a solution yet, but I'm working on it. Because I, I, I don't think that when it comes to hiring...
Staff's working on it, or you're working on it?
What's the difference?
Because you talk about slapping people in the face and not letting them do their jobs, but it sounds like you're centralizing authority.
You know, Commissioner, I don't want to have to, I don't have, don't want to have to correct you, but, uh, usually I've found that, uh, a lot of the work that I do, the staff welcomes. Yeah, hate, hate to break it to you, but all I gotta do is come around a little bit, and you can learn.
Sounds like you're the father.
So, so it takes. When it comes to hiring people, uh, you know, we, we really, we should be keeping our hands out of that. Um, and that should be left up to the staff, and they got the procedures and tasks and, you know, they interview and, we, we, I'm telling you, we've got a number of items that need some semblance of order. And, uh, I mean, I'm definitely, I'm gonna attempt, make my attempt to come up with some recommendations. Um, and by all means, I would encourage you, until then, if you had any recommendations, you know, by all means, feel free to share them with me. If you're afraid to talk to me on the phone, send it in an email. That's okay, you know, because I am the mean, evil emperor. You know, as everybody likes to say up here, that they ask, as people in the audience and the cameras, the emperor. Feel free to share it with me in email. You know, I welcome, uh, any suggestions or ideas that you may have. But we, we, we do need to, we do need to find some clarity, um, to both how our administrator, uh, you know, is gonna interact on a daily basis and with whom. And, you know, whether or not we as a village want to selectively, whether or not we want to selectively cut the administrator out of the loop. I think it's a bad idea, but if, if that's how you all feel you want to operate, you know, we, we have to live with whatever the majority is. So if the majority of you say, "You know what? For those of us that like our administrator, we'll work with them. For those of us that don't like him, you know, we'll just keep him out of the loop. We'll call him in when we feel it's necessary to call him in," whatever the majority feels like up here. But in order to do that, we are gonna have to make some modifications to some of our village code, so that then it becomes clear. Can't really have a policy, not with elected officials. You know, some of these things, because they affect elected officials, are gonna have to come in the form of ordinances, which become part of our village code. The policies sound nice, they don't work. We've had policies in place, they're not working. We could rewrite the policies, that's not gonna work either. I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. And just as a reminder, uh, I myself was a little lax in the past on motions to adjourn. Motions to adjourn by Robert's Rules of Order are not debatable, which means you get a motion to adjourn, if there's a second, it goes straight to roll call. And, uh, that's how we're gonna be doing it from here on out. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, if you're, so your pleasure.
So moved, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hostie moves. Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Seconded by Mannix, the clerk can't proceed.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Aye.
Commissioner Mannix?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Keldrum?
Aye. We stand adjourned.